So I'm gonna pull that out of, out of, early, so that way if they wanna stay, fine, and if they don't. Do you have any problem with that, Wallace?
What?
I wanna announce it first, so if those people aren't gonna, if they don't wanna stay.
I'll announce it up there.
Any problem? So that way it don't...
Yeah, we're good.
Okay. All right, being after six o'clock, whatever time it is, I can't see it, I'm gonna call a meeting to order. I wanna make an announcement. Item number...
Six.
Six has been pulled. So if you were here for only that item, we are not going to be discussing the casino discussion. So, thank you, I appreciate it, but I didn't want you to sit here and expect to be heard on that item when it isn't going to be discussed. So, with that, we will come back from closed session and... Pardon me? Yeah, I was just gonna, I was looking for some poor soul who'll be willing to say that, or some proud soul. George, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance...
To the flag...
...of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Shall we bow for a word of prayer, please? Father, we thank you for tonight, we thank you for the opportunities that exist, to lean upon you for your wisdom and your guidance. Father, we thank you for the hearts of the men and women that make up this great community, and the men and women that serve on this great council. Father, we thank you for you being in the midst of us and controlling our emotions, that you would be magnified in all that we do. We love you, we thank you, amen.
Amen. Please be seated, thank you. Okay, we have the city attorney's report.
Madam Mayor, two items are described in the agenda for closed session. One item was discussed, direction was given, no final action was taken, and the council will be returning to closed session at the end of tonight's meeting to finish up business.
Thank you, sir. We have a presentation. Chief, if you wanna come up, please, sir. And let's all join him.
Yeah, the mic is on, great, okay. I have here tonight Reverend Hearn's family. Reverend Hearn was a chaplain with the Ridgecrest Police Department on two occasions for a total of sixteen years. I'm making the presentation tonight because Reverend Hearn was very special to me. He was a police officer prior to becoming a preacher. He was a very good confidant. He was a man that you could talk to, he had a lot of wisdom. He was very special to me. I would like to have given this plaque a lot sooner, but we got his badge back, and I put it on a plaque, so the family could have this forever. This is the chaplain badge that was issued to him. So you have it on the plaque, and it says, "In memory of Ridgecrest Police Department's first chaplain, Reverend Douglas Hearn. Dedicated in the honor and recognition of Reverend Hearn's service to Ridgecrest Police Department and the citizens of Ridgecrest." Your father was a wonderful man, and he will be remembered forever, especially by me. I mean, he married my wife and I, and he baptized both my children, so he was a great guy. There you go.
I wanna thank everybody for the love and respect that you guys have for my dad. Thank you.
Take your hand, we wanna say thank you too. Thank you so very much. And thank you. Can I take your hand? Thank you. And how old are you? You're three?
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is the presentation of the fiscal year comprehensive annual financial report, the CAFR of the City of Ridgecrest and Tess. Are you here, are you going to be doing that? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, member of the city council. Thank you very much for having me here tonight to present the City of Ridgecrest, the financial statement for fiscal year end June 30, 2017. So in front of you is the comprehensive annual financial report that we issued back in December. So tonight, I'm going to highlight the information and talking about the audit results for this year audit. So what we are going through tonight is actually talking about the scope of work that we are engaged by the, by the city. As required by the auditing standard, we are required to go through some audit responsibility, not only on the city management side, but also on our side as the auditor. We'll give you a brief overview of the financial statement. Hopefully, at that time, you can actually ask me some questions that you may have. And then also, I'm a big financial indicator guy, looking at ratios, and then pulling out the pension information, because this is a really hot topics in the industry. So, and last but not least is to go through the audit results. So the scope of work, actually, we divide into two parts. One is the financial statement audit, which actually include the cities of Ridgecrest, our basic financial statement. And then also, the city is required to go through a compliance audit called single audit. This audit is because the city has expended more than $750,000 of federal expenditure, and those actually required us to go through the federal expenditure, and also be opined on the major program that has a direct and major effect. So, as required by the auditing standard, the audit responsibility side, let's first talk about management. As management yourself, you are fully responsible for these financial statement. By presenting these financial statement in accordance with generally accepted accounting principle. Keep that in mind, the city, the city is a municipal, state and local government, so the governmental accounting standard board is the standard-setting bodies for state, local government that the city is actually adherence to. You also need to adopt sound accounting policy. The next big bullet point is to establish and maintain proper internal control over both financial reporting and compliance. These actually trying to avoid any material misstatement, whether due from, due from errors or due from fraud. Also needs to provide evidence supporting to the amount and disclosure in the financial statement. And last but not least, is to prevent and detect fraud here. Our responsibility as the auditor is to perform the audit in accordance with AICPA generally accepted auditing standard, and then also the government auditing standard. We are here to communicate with those charged with governance, that's why here, I'm here tonight to provide a two-way communications to you, and also giving you a forum that you can ask questions on, on the audit. You are here to assess the audit risk of internal control over financial reporting and compliance. We determine the fairness presentation of these financial statement and render our audit opinions. Let's take a look at the financial statement. So the comprehensive annual financial report is actually divided into three big sections. The first is the introductory sections, the second sections is the main one. That we affirm has spent significant amount of time in the, in the financial sections, which include the first document is the Independence Auditor's Report, which is our opinion on these financial statement. The management discussion and analysis, which is a required supplementary information under the GASP statement number thirty-four, even though you see this is an audited statement, but also, this include a lot of analysis and discussion talking about the current financial position within the year. So also, it compares to prior year financials, so that you can see why the, the story behind the scene, why the financial position's going up for the current year. The basic financial statement actually have a couple components. The first components within the basic financial statement is the government-wide financial statement. The government-wide financial statement is a consolidated financial statement of the city, so by breaking it down into governmental activities and then also the business-type activities. This is a really, it's a full accrual basis of accounting, using a economic resource focus, and you can actually see the whole entire picture, the financial picture of the city under the government-wide financial statement. The fund financial statement is the day-to-day operations that the city's actually using, which include the general fund, the special revenue fund, debt service fund, capital project funds, and then also the enterprise fund and internal service fund, those are all included in the fund financial statement. The notes to a basic financial statement is also key to the numbers itself, because actually give you a much more detail of what's the numbers behind those, what's the details behind those number. The required supplementary information is another area that's provide you a lot more detailed information regarding the budgetary information. For example, the general fund budget to actual, because the city actually did adopt the budget for, for all majority of your funds. So the budgetary information regarding the general fund is actually did include in this sections. Under the GASP sixty-eight, the new pension standard, which implement about like two years ago, there are some new required schedules. So the schedule of change in proportionate share of the net pension liabilities and related ratio, and the schedule of contribution schedule is also include in this, in this sections. Other post-employment benefit, the GASP has not adopt, has not required the cities to implement the standard until, the new standard until next year to mirror the pension standard. So that's why what you see here is a schedule of funding progress for the other post-employment benefit plan. Last but not least is the supplementary information, that's also give you some other detailed information regarding some, some fund financial statement that did not meet the major criteria under GASP thirty-four, and those information are all included in the supplementary information. So last but not least, the statistical sections actually provide you some trend, trending information regarding financial trend, revenue capacity, the debt capacity, the demographic information, and economic information, and operating information. So let's take a deep look at the current year, the June thirty, 2017 financial position. So the first statement here is the government-wide statement of net position as of June thirty, 2017. This is a point in time statement, which is actually, this statement is only reflected as of June thirty, 2017. At that date, you have $111 million in total asset, total liabilities of $28.2 million, resulting in $87.5 million of net position. As you can see, there are two other elements in the, in the statement of net position, the defer outflow of resources and defer inflow of resources. Those two category actually includes some items that is coming out from the actuarial study. Those amount has not been used to calculate the current year pension expense, and will defer it to the future years to calculate it. So those amount are actually included in, in those two elements. Within your net position, this is the net equity of the city. So as of June thirty, 2017, you have $65 million in net investment in capital asset, $11 million in restricted, and then also unrestricted, you have $11.3 million. GASP actually did coughed out the capital asset and set it aside, even though it is, the total asset, you have about like $87.5 million in total asset, but majority, $65 million are actually non-liquid asset. So that's why they, they put it in the, in a separate category. $11 million is actually restricted by third party, and then the unrestricted, you can see the governmental activity, you have about like $12.5 million in deficit for the governmental activities, and then another twenty, close to $24 million for the business-type activities. And we'll talk about the unrestricted deficit in the governmental activities, because this is the, one of the, the big thing when you first implement the GASP statement number sixty-eight, the pension standard, the unfunded pension liabilities is now reflected as a liability. So that's, that was the reason why the governmental activities actually create a deficit position. Let's look at, a look at the current year operations. So for the city as a whole, total expenses is about like $18.9 million. Net of program revenues, program revenues actually include the charges for service, that is, you can actually charge somebody, the user for a fee of about like $7.8 million. Also, including the operating grants and the capital grants, which is $1.8 million and $2.2 million respectively. So total program revenue is about $11.8 million, resulting in net cost of service of $7.1 million. So all the taxes that's included in the general revenue, it's about like $17.3 million, resulting a $10 million increase in your net position. So breaking it down by the governmental activities and the business-type activities, both of the activities have a really nice result. $5.7 million increase for the governmental activities, and then the $4.5 million for the business-type activities. The general fund is the main operating fund of the city, so we actually want to pull that out and take a look at the general fund. The general fund, as of June thirty, 2017, you have $5.8 million. Liability, $4.3 million, resulting a $5.8 million of, $1.4 million in total fund balance. So of which, $56,000 is non-spendable. Those are actually items that is prepaid item that the city already spend the money, but it is, the item has not been used, or the service has not been, been covered. So that's why it's called prepaid expense, and it's called, it's classified as non-spendable. Restricted, $480,000, and then leaving the, leaving the assigned fund balance of $938,000. What about the current year operations of the general fund? You also have a positive surplus for the, for the, for this year operation. $12.5 million of total revenue earned during the year, $11.6 million of total expenditure, resulting the revenue over expenditure of $938,000 increase. Also, the, the general fund also transferred out of about like a net of $164,000 to other funds for other operations. So still, at the end of the day, the general fund increases its fund balance by $774,000. Also, in the next couple slides, I'll go, go ahead and show you some ratio, because this is always the things that I always looked at. The net cost of service is about $11.5 million. Total tax revenue is $11.1, close to $11.2 million. The ratio is almost breakeven, it's 102%. So it's always nice to see that ratio to be, to below the 100%. That way, you, you have a much better, basically, it's all the cost, net cost of service will be covered 100% by the tax revenue, excluding the, the investments. The other thing that I'm looking at is the general fund and assigned fund balance. As of June thirty, 2017, the city does not have an unassigned fund balance as of that, as of that day. So it's nice to have about like a two-month rainy days fund reserve to set aside in your unassigned fund balance, but unfortunately, as of June thirty, 2017, you still don't have any fund balance reserve for any rainy, rainy days fund purposes. But I can tell this has come a long way, because in the, in the last couple years, these numbers are always in a deficit position. So this is really the first, first year after all this year, it's at least, you don't have anything remaining, but at least the fund balance of the general fund is not in a deficit position. Okay? So now, we talk about the pension standard. The pension is really hot, it's a hot topic in the, in the governmental industry here. So would like to pull out the, the net pension liability. As you recall, when, when we talk about the governmental activities, you have a $12 million of, of deficit in your unrestricted net position. Part of the reason is recording these big net pension liability as of June thirty, 2017, of about like $17 million. So the city is part of Cowperse Plan, the city has two plans. One is the miscellaneous plan, and the other one is the safety plan. So the miscellaneous plan, at the last valuation date was actually June thirty, 2015. Keep that in mind, the valuation is always two years behind. So that's why these liability is also rated at the discount rate of 7.5% instead of a lower percent. So we are expecting to see this, this liability, it's going up when the Cowperse is actually dropping the discount rate starting in June thirty, 2018. Both plan has around like 70%, 70% of funded ratio, so which is a really good, healthy ratio based on my experience, and also looking at how the industry look like. Okay? The other one is the GASP statement number forty-five, other post-employment benefit. The city do actually set aside money in an irrevocable trust. So as of the last valuation, which is about like two years behind here, so June thirty, 2015, the city has a total asset of $449,000 set aside in the irrevocable trust. The total OPEP liabilities, which is $961,000, creating an unfunded OPEP liabilities of $512,000. So the funded ratio is about 47%, which is about average of other cities that I looked at, so. Last but not least is to go through the audit results. We are happy to issue the unmodified opinion for all opinions unit, which means that the financial statement are fairly present in all material respect. The accounting policy have been consistently applied, the estimates are reasonable, and then the disclosure are properly reflect in these financial statement. We do not have any disagreement with management, we do not have any significant deficiency or material weaknesses identified in internal control over both financial reporting and compliance, there's no accounting issues, and there's no inappropriate activities that were noted in the audit. So that concludes my presentation tonight, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Are you looking for council's questions first? I would like to do council's questions first, I'll ask the public, and then if council wants to follow up afterwards, is that any problem with that?
I have no problem with that.
Okay, council? Anybody have questions? Go ahead, Mike. Put your speaker up.
We, we went over this in, in finance committee meeting, and I had one question. Page one fifty-three, it indicates four notes, one, two, three, and four, but there's only three notes at the bottom of the page. It looks like franchise fees were skipped. Looks like three is really four, and there is no three. Does that make sense? Am I reading wrong?
I will have to double-check that. Yeah, I think I will have to double-check that and get back to you.
If you could get back to us on that, we appreciate it.
No problem.
And we also noticed, I noticed that in, in the vehicle, in lieu of tax, it's down $100,000 from last year to this year. Is there, is that a statewide thing, or is that just...
Yeah, it's a statewide thing.
Because the state's taking more share?
Yeah.
I figured that, but I thought I'd ask.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Eddie? Okay. All right, whatever you wanna do. You wanna wait or go now?
I can go now. There was, I can't remember the slide, there was a slide that you showed where a few years ago, we were upside down, and now we are on the right side of, of life, for lack of a better word. Is there a, a projection as to what we should do to continue on that path, or are we on the right path?
I think you guys are on the right path, because one of the thing that major impact the financial position is actually the city did pass the couple measures, the measure L. That's actually, since then, it's actually recover the deficit in your general fund. And then also, now I can see the, the general fund, even though there's a, in the fund loan between the, the, the general fund and the enterprise fund because of the Harvard Javas, the Harvard Javas litigation, and there's a settlement between those. I can see that the city's actually did pay it down based on the amortization schedule, and if based on the, the trend, if everything's moving the right direction, just like what, what I see in 2017, you probably can create back the, the rainy days fund reserve. But also, at the same time, we, we are, we will be really, really cautious, because couple things will happen pretty rapidly. One is the pension. The pension cost is going to, 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 to go up because of the, the investment portfolio at Cowperse is not doing that great in the last couple of years. And then also, the, the Cowperse already start reducing the discount rate for the funding option, starting in June thirty, 2018. So every year, you are expecting to see the, the contribution cost is going up for the unfunded pension liabilities. Second, it is kinda like, in my opinion, it is due for another recession. So if the, the market is not doing great, then it will hit hard for, for, for government. So those will be a couple things that I need to be, like the city's management, the council needs to be aware of. But the thing was, if, if the operations is going like, like 2017, without any major impact in the, in the stock market, or in, in the pension cost, yeah, I think the, the city's in the right directions. In my opinion, yeah.
Thank you. On page one fifty-seven, you give the top ten principal property taxpayers for fiscal year 2017 and ten years prior. Is it, since this is public, if I name these names, I'm not violating anybody's information here, so I don't want anybody to think I'm naming names indiscriminately. But like K Partners was the top, the number one taxable assessed value of over 18 million. You go down to number seven, Walmart, with $6,246,000, and last year, last... And last year, last year, their rank was four. Why did one who, I I'm only, I mean, I can compare all the others. The hospital was only eight million, and I really thought with all the work that they did in two thousand seventeen, that would have been assessed. Does it have to do with the assessments or why is Walmart, uh base, my basic question is why is Walmart so low?
Unfortunately, we did not like, this is an unguarded statement and then also these these actually this information came from HDL. So they may have a little better answer on this one, so.
Okay. I'm I'm concerned because what it does is if indeed these are correct numbers, it would seem to me Walmart and maybe others should be paying more i- in taxes. And I'm not trying to pick on Walmart, even though they're one of our our most important businesses, as all of these are. Every business is important. I was just surprised that it was so low. So I would appreciate if somebody could tell me why taxes. You will get that? Okay, all right. Uh I had some others, but they're picky un and they don't really require a whole lot of information. I want a little bit more analysis and I would like to be able to come back a- at the finance committee and submit my questions. If the finance committee has everybody there, I'll just put them in writing. Otherwise, I'll, because I attend the meetings and can't speak, if there's already two others there, then I will do that in writing.
Can I, can I do a follow up question on yours?
Sure.
You said this information in some of these came from somebody else?
Yes, actually, according to the uh the footnote, this these information actually came from HDL. HDL is a company that they they do a lot of um of sales tax audit and tax audit. So these information are you, they are pretty accurate coming from from them.
Well, on page one sixty six.
Yeah.
Were you gonna ask that one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um I happen to be associated with the hospital. Hospitals list as number two at eight fifty four employees. Belacera, which is actually a part of the hospital, is included in the eight fifty four and they never had eight hundred and fifteen employees. I don't know how Belacera got on there as number three because that's totally inaccurate. They have less than a hundred employees, but they're included as a part of the hospital and hospital figures.
Okay.
So whoever's furnishing that information.
Yeah, this information, they actually come from Muni Service.
From where?
Muni Services.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we we need to let them know that that's that's a major error.
Yeah.
Because it looks like the hospital has almost seventeen hundred employees and they don't. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
We were, we were also gonna look at fixing the information on page one sixty eight with the the police.
Yeah.
Numbers too. So there was a couple of these back tables that we had said needed to be fixed.
Oh, that's right. These probably came from the same group, huh?
Several ones made up the bit.
I'm wondering if when you make comments on the validity of the audit, nothing what you commented on were impacted by these statistics in the back.
No, nothing, nothing.
And so I don't want it to, anybody to think that it affects how good or how bad our audit was.
Correct.
I was really surprised. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. I didn't want to make a comment after you guys haven't answered questions. I was really surprised and I said to Stan Rotora because he's a budget aficionado, and I said, I couldn't believe how informative this was. And if it's been this informative in past years, the statistics gave more information about the city than I have ever seen. And he said it's been in there before. Maybe it's in a format that is easily understandable for us. And I think whoever did that tests, if you had input to that, I thank you because not only, I think they defined our future in these statistics if we are assuming they're all correct. And so I thank you and and our staff for that. Go ahead, Wallace.
No, I don't, I don't.
Okay. Lindsay, did you have others?
Oh, no. I just would like to see our planning permits filled in as well because it says that we didn't fill that data because of.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, all right, public, do you have any comment on the CAFR?
Madam Mayor, can I have one question, please?
Sure.
Uh Mr. Pund, you were talking earlier about the Pers, the unfunded actuarial costs and the potential of them going up in the future. I know right now that in sixteen, we were at, I believe it was seven point five percent interest they're charging of that unfunded actuarial, and now it's at seven and a quarter. Uh what's your estimation of where this may be going in the future?
Well, um based on the uh, based on the um analysis that I'm looking at the CalPERS study, um CalPERS actually start um dropping the discount rate starting um in June thirty two um two thousand eighteen and then take a three year step to reduce that discount rate to seven percent. That's what gonna happen to your contribution rate. Uh it's not going to be impact immediately, it's progressively increased based on the couple analysis that I worked with other cities. And the contribution rate will actually hit peak in the year of June thirty two thousand twenty six, twenty seven, and twenty eight. And for example, if you're, if you are paying about like seventeen percent on your miscellaneous plan, you are expecting to pay about like thirty four percent by by June thirty two thousand uh twenty eight. For safety plan, probably is much higher. Uh now you're probably paying thirty five percent around that range, but also by the time twenty twenty eight, you're expecting to pay probably seventy percent to maybe even ninety percent.
Would it help if the city bonded at a fixed rate of, let's say, four and a half or five percent for our unfunded actuarial costs?
Well, um I would not be able to answer that question unless I really see the whole entire analysis. But one of the suggestion is, first of all, if you actually use a bonded debt to actually bet against these the unfunded pension liabilities at CalPERS in pu- uh investment portfolio, don't know what time, like when to do it is the best timing because right now I'm expecting a another recession is coming, coming um coming to um to play. And then also at the same time, um there are other options. If the city do have other money that can set aside, do a hybrid profile, paying down some to CalPERS, but also setting aside uh up uh to a section one fifteen trust, that may be another option. So that's why I suggest the city to actually go work with um your financial advisors and then also working with an o- um actuary. Those actually can give you more uh solution because I I've been working with a couple other cities, actually get both of them involved and come up with a solution.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. No other counsel comment or staff? Okay, public comment, please?
Hi there, Scott Miller. My address is on file. I may have lost something in translation. Uh Madam Mayor, you were talking numbers like Walmart and the hospital. Was that sales tax or property tax?
It's property tax.
Okay, so it was not sales tax?
Top ten property tax, principal property taxpayers fiscal year twenty seventeen and ten years prior.
Okay, very well. I didn't hear that part, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know how many of you actually read the audit thoroughly, but if you look at page one, it states very clearly that the auditor is not expressing an opinion on the city's internal controls. And that's very important, all right? Hopefully, the city is required to have internal financial controls and hopefully you're all aware of the fact that there is a one point one million dollar discrepancy in the FY eighteen budget due to a a lack of internal control over the handling of of administrative overhead funding. I would encourage you to not rest on your laurels associated with this audit. We still have some serious problems that we need to look into and correct. I know it's it's been a subject at the finance committee. I want to make sure that we don't overlook that very critical aspect because that was not covered at all in this audit. And I do have one comment with regard to the, specifically regarding the CAFR, is if you go back to, I think probably um October of last year, um maybe, maybe earlier, but whatever, we actually voted on a reconciled FY seventeen budget. It is approving the reconciliation of the budget um for FY seventeen. If you look at the monies that were spent for public safety according to that reconciled budget, uh it was right around six point eight million dollars. If you look at what it is in the CAFR, it's closer to six point five million dollars. There's almost three hundred thousand, two hundred and seventy some thousand dollars difference between what we, you all passed as a reconciled budget and what is in the CAFR. Now, there's probably some very logical reason why they're different, and I'm not not saying anybody stole three hundred thousand dollars, but to me, it would be nice if we only have one set of books and and expenditures regardless of where they are, if the council is told that expenditures are X, then when the CAFR comes out, it'd be nice to have it be the same X and not something different. Otherwise, you gotta chase those down and you don't ever know which one's right or 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 anything like that. So I I would recommend that we try hard to make sure that um we're consistent because otherwise nobody knows where we are and it makes it very difficult for people to understand. But I would again like to encourage you to follow up on the, again, the internal controls that we have within the city because we can't go on the way we are. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, counsel. Mike Neal, I'd like to uh call your attention to page one sixty six of the report, in particular the top line item, which is the employment of Naval Air Weapons Station China Lake. If you look at the two thousand seven eight and the twenty sixteen seventeen numbers, that increase uh over this last eight years represents a twenty percent increase in the employment on the base. This in reference to recent discussions and and you know, things are said frequently about, well, we had to worry about employee retention for the base here in town. Those figures need to be thought about carefully and and you know, think about that and decide do, does it really look like they're having employee retention problems when their employee numbers have gone up twenty percent? You know, this is also one with reference to the upcoming proposed property tax assessment, which has to do with funding parks, which one of the primary elements is leaning on that particular argument, oh, we need to help assist with employee retention, we need to make life better in town. The other thing that directly relates to that is on page six of the, I don't know what I call it, the introductory section, I guess, which is, just shows you a bar graph of the property taxes. Uh I brought this up at the finance committee, but there are council members here that weren't there. You'll note from twenty thirteen to seventeen, you basically have a five hundred thousand dollar per year increase in the sales taxes coming into the city. If that trend continues, obviously, you can count on five hundred thousand dollars more next year, possibly even more than that, since you've talked the citizens into taxing the sales another quarter of percent for measure V this, you know, in the last year's time. So those kind of things are very informative, they need to be looked at and then considered in the overall situation down here at City Hall and the finances of City Hall. Uh when you're talking about trying to propose taxing the citizens more, it's good to see those kind of graphs, it gives you hard data. We, it would be very nice to see uh projection numbers, which I think we can, you know, do with some validity on into a few years into the future, uh keeping in mind realistic possibilities that, you know, could affect things like the the sales tax increase, uh but then again, maybe not. So there's a lot here, I understand. It's hard for me to go through a hundred and seventy five pages of stuff, but there's a lot of verbiage and things like that bar graph, things like those statistical numbers are easy to digest and easy to get into your cognitive thinking regions and uh mull over and decide, you know, what what we're, what we're being told, uh you know, does it correlate with the real data that there is? Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to respond at all?
No.
No?
I have no comment.
Okay. Sir?
Dave Matthews, excuse me, Dave Matthews, my address is on file. Back at the beginning of the presentation, I haven't had a chance to look at any of these up close, but uh some of my colleagues out here are doing good jobs. But there was a list or or an entry of capital assets, I believe, and um I'm assuming that that includes things like the building, uh the equipment that's used by employees and this, and perhaps maybe even the vehicles that the police use and and the the street department uses and so on. It does not include streets, however, is that correct?
Um, that is not correct. And back in um, back in two thousand three, um the city actually did implement GASP statement number thirty four, uh which required the the city to go value the the street back to the historical cost. And all the street and road, including all the infrastructure, median, the gutter, everything is included in the capital asset.
Okay, well, that's interesting. Uh my point that I was trying to get to here, though, is that I have become aware recently that there, for the buildings and so on, there is no uh capital depreciation fund. And I'm wondering, is there even a standard for it? And why don't we have one?
There's no required accounting standard that the city is required to set up a a capital depreciation fund. It's a practice that the city may do, may want to do to set aside money or from the depreciation, to set aside money for the uh for the maintenance cause and replacement.
Okay, well, any usually, any going business that's going to be in business for a while has has such thing, and I think, I think it would be a good thing for our city to look into. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other public comment? Any other counsel comment? Okay, then we are taking this and accepting and filing, is that it?
Yes, that's correct, except for I believe a few changes that need to be made in the final document.
No problem.
So, after that, we are on public comment. Persons wishing to address the council on matters that are within the council's jurisdiction and do not already appear on the agenda may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council may not take action on an item that does not appear on the agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes. The public comment section of the agenda is limited to a total of one hour. Each speaker is asked to provide his or her name. Please.
Hi, my name is Tracy Cooper, um and I'd like to address uh that I am here tonight as a concerned citizen to bring attention to the matter that I believe will have a big impact on the city. It has come to my attention, the State of California Employment Development Department employees who work in the Rich Crest Americas Job Center will be relocated to Bakersfield. This means that the services they provide will no longer be available in Rich Crest. The two Employment Development Department employees at this office assist employers, job seekers, unemployment applicants, state disability applicants, and veterans. One of the employees serves veterans on a full-time basis. Michael is a veteran himself and has been a valuable resource in assisting veterans with obtaining employment and resources. Every day, Americas Job Center staff assists our public with resume assistance, interview practice, job seekers attended workshops, and job recruitment. And some residents were there to help. there to help get with their unemployment and disability claims. They also have employers who utilize their services and facilities to post jobs, coordinate recruitments, to administer vocational tests, or to conduct interviews. If you or anyone you know has ever utilized EDD services, you will know that they helped over ten thousand Ridgecrest citizens last year alone. That's one-third of the population. They have helped many job seekers obtain employment, and they have even assisted with getting homeless veterans placed in living facilities. Without the assistance of the local EDD staff, residents who need help, employment or disability, would have to try to get issues resolved using an eight-hundred number that has limited hours and impossible wait times. I don't know why the decision has been made to remove these services from Ridgecrest, or if the public support would help us keep these services local, but I do know that it will not be easy to get the services back to Ridgecrest if they are moved. We are an isolated area that is often overlooked when resources are being allocated.
Tracy, I appreciate you coming forward. You brought, you didn't, someone from, called me and asked me how best to deal with this, and I asked you to come and speak at public comment, because I wanted to see if we would write a letter making a protest to the State Department of Unemployment and Veterans the whole entire, because there is two there, is that, do I understand?
Mm-hmm.
Is there any possibility, and have they given you any idea that they might keep part of it, or are they just moving everything over?
I'm not exactly sure. I do know that some are staying, some are le, are being made to leave. Right now, I'd have to have you ask the, you know.
Okay. I understood, and when I, after I spoke, I called and said, what is happening? And the people, the two that are there are being transferred to Bakersfield, and they are not real excited about moving over there or traveling back and forth.
No, but right now, I can tell you that since I do work with the Ridgecrest Veterans Advisory Council as well, that veterans that do go to them, they don't even have enough to eat, let alone, we have to supply bus tickets, hotel rooms, and everything like that, just to get them aid in Bakersfield. We, we don't have resources here locally, and if you remove the EDD office, that will limit us to perhaps one man a week that comes to help, you know, veterans and, and we, we do it on a volunteer basis, so.
That was what I was told. I just was just going to say, I know you're doing that.
Everything is volunteer, and we get it from fundraisers and everything like that. We don't have, we don't get any help here, you know. If, if they leave, we'll have nothing for the veterans, and they're, it seems like they're, we're getting calls more and more every week.
I would urge anybody who's hearing this, or anybody who has association with veterans, to write a letter. Talk to your representative, both Assemblyman Fong and Senator Fuller. Ask what we can do to make this, look at it again. I understand they're leaving, so it'll be June thirtieth is their last. I'd like to get a letter from the City of Ridgecrest asking the same thing, and if we can direct staff to do so, and what, what would it take to get them to even just keep it open?
Well, we do have a meeting next Tuesday at one o'clock with McCarthy's representatives are, are coming, and we're going to try and voice a lot of concerns there about, you know, why Cal, Cal Vet and everything doesn't come to Ridgecrest and help us out. There are, there is paid personnel that should be coming here or not. So, we have a lot of concerns, you know, and we believe that we need to do something for our veterans and.
Is, is anybody able to come to that meeting?
Yes, we have a couple of people.
Is any of the public able to come to that meeting?
Um, yeah.
I would urge.
Can I get you that information?
If you would, if you would send it to us and let us know, send it to RICA, and if anybody wants to be there, RICA, is that okay? And anybody wants to be there to voice their concerns, because quite frankly, to lose that service from both the feds and the state is not exactly something we want to see happen here.
No, we already have, they're already suffering now, it's just going to add insult to injury, pretty much, you know. Thank you.
Okay. So, staff, can we write a letter?
Yes, for you to sign.
Pardon me?
For the mayor to sign.
Does anyone have a problem if I sign it, or would you rather have, have our general manager sign it?
Madam Mayor, I don't have a problem. I don't have a problem either way. I would, I would just concern, do we have extremely strong letters and just passive letters?
A strong letter. A strong letter.
From a legal standpoint, do we have those in our library to?
Do you want a strong or soft letter on this?
Which would you like?
I would like for a, a strong letter.
Okay.
If we had one.
I, I'd recommend that we probably write the letter and have the mayor sign it. It has probably a little more weight to it with politicians.
I third the motion for a strong letter.
All right.
Okay. Boyd, pull that from the strong letter pile.
Okay, thank you. Is that, is that a good start? And will you fill us in? Tracy, are you still here? Did you leave? If you would, fill us in what you find out from Mr. McCarthy's office, so we can follow up if we need to? Thank you. Okay, Stan.
Stan Rotora. At the last city council meeting, I brought up the, the subject of lack of progress regarding the new wastewater treatment plant. It turns out that that particular item was on the agenda of the infrastructure meeting the following week. However, no new information was provided, and, and we were told there was a, a letter on the desk of some Assistant Secretary of the Navy, but we've known that for weeks, if not months. If you could look at the history, the city started working with the Navy prior to two thousand and ten to get an EPA grant. The last design report was out in October of two thousand and fifteen. In April of last year, the city set up an ad hoc committee to work with the Navy. At that time, all discussion went behind closed doors, and the public has not been privy to any information since then. Now, we do know that last year, a letter was sent to ASN regarding the lease of BLM property currently controlled by the Navy. However, to my knowledge, that letter was never approved by the city council, nor was it reviewed by the city council. It was not approved by the ad hoc committee, based upon knowledge that I have, right or wrong, and it was not even reviewed by the ad hoc committee. I decided I wanted to have a copy of the letter, so I actually submitted a public records request. I was, the, the request was denied based upon the fact that the letter is part of a process or something like that, and therefore exempt. I, I, I would have to say that I didn't ask for a process, I asked for a letter. The letter was signed and presumably on city letterhead. It's not a draft letter. It was a letter that was actually mailed to the Assistant Secretary of the Navy. It maybe went through San Diego, but nonetheless, it was a formal letter signed out from the city. I'm assuming it went out under the city manager's name. And so, as far as I'm concerned, there's no excuse not to provide that letter to the public. That's, and, and independent of, of what any rules or regulations or what, what full, full stupidity of the legal system that we are working under, as far as I'm concerned, the public has a right to the information, and it really comes down to transparency. Everybody that has been elected over the last fifteen years has said, I'm for transparency. And unfortunately, after the election, people forget how to spell the word, or understand, or, or forget what it actually means. I would like to have a copy of that letter. I mean, that's really the bottom line. I see no reason or excuse not to provide it to the public. And as a matter of fact, my feeling is that the council also should have a copy of the letter, and they should be looking at it and should have a public discussion of the letter. The, the, the experience of this council with any dealings with the Navy over the last fifteen years have been very negative in terms of benefit to the public. We need to turn that around. The only way we're going to turn that around is to put the information in the hands of the public and in the council, and to have public, public discussion of what's going on. You have any questions? I want the letter.
Mr. Strand, would you respond to that, please?
Stan, it was me that denied you that letter. For specific purposes, we are negotiating with the Navy on an easement agreement. That does have contract language in there that we are trying to work through, as you well know. That letter is currently, or that portion of that easement agreement, our draft, our side to the issue is to the Assistant Secretary of Navy for a decision. This is not something that, at this point in time, we want as a public debate, since we're negotiations with the Navy. It's not good business to do that at this point in time. Now, once that comes back and we start presenting that easement agreement and the renditions, obviously, I'm not going to sign that without council approval, without public input. But at this point in time, to, to, just to release that to you, your probative value doesn't outweigh our ability to be able to try and negotiate with the Navy without frustrating the whole process.
I, I wasn't aware that there was a, a negotiation going on. They, they have to give us an easement, or we can't build a facility. What, see, that's part of the problem, is nobody knows what's in the letter. And, and there was no discussion about any negotiation. The question is whether or not they're going to give us an easement. So, there, there can't be a negotiation. We cannot get a loan if we can't get an easement.
Correct. We are working through those issues that will make, they'll either make the, the project fundable or not fundable.
Yeah. You, you can't negotiate something that's, that's yes or no. The question is, you know, what are we actually asking for? And, and nobody seems to know. The council doesn't know, the ad hoc committee doesn't know. My feeling is, it ought to be the council involved in this negotiation, if that's really what it is, although until you read the letter, you're not going to know.
We've actually made, we've actually made, Stan, we've actually made significant progress with the Navy, and that's my concern about frustrating this issue. We have made progress, we are moving forward, and to, to open this up to public debate at this stage would be unadvisable. There will be public input, the public will have access to this draft, but at this point in time, I just don't think it's wise to be having a, a second debate while we're trying to work through some issues with the Navy. It is at the Assistant Secretary.
When you say we're trying to work these issues with the Navy, who are you referring to?
Myself and the city attorney.
Yeah. And see, that is part of my problem, Ron. No disrespect meant, but every time we've tried to deal with the Navy, we, the public has come out on the short end of the stick. And, and we need to turn that around, and I don't see how we're going to turn that around without public input before we start negotiating, because we, we need to agree on what are, are going in levels of commitment. And what, may I ask, when do, are you expecting to have a reply?
I don't have that answer. I know I spoke with Commander Longbottom and the skipper this last week, and they say it is on the desk. It, it got there, I believe, last week. So, however long it's going to take for them to take a look at it, provide their input, and get it back through the channels to us, so we can sit and meet with the Navy, we'll see.
Well, Oak Harbor, Washington waited for months and months, and so, got to remember, while we're talking, building costs are going up, and interest rates are probably going up. So, we need to be very careful about what we're doing, and I hope you know what you're doing, to be quite honest. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other public comment?
Dave Matthews, I want to encourage you to go ahead with that letter regarding the Employment Department leaving. This is the first I've heard about it, and it's just like the Social Security Department. We used to have a representative come up here, I think, once, once a month at least, and then somebody decided that they're not going to do that, and I've talked to, or heard stories from a number of people that have to go down there, or they get on the phone, and the phone is worthless, because you don't have the face-to-face contact, you don't have the ability, and you have, have an enormous weight. And this is not the way to serve the public. So, I strongly, and I'm going to get in contact with, with our state representatives, and also, I'll probably try and be to that, that meeting with McCarthy's staff, too. So, please, go forward with that.
Thank you, sir.
Nobody's smiling up there. Oh, no, what's up? Well, the reason I wanted to make public comment is because there is a recurring.
Would you please identify yourself for the record?
Oh, yes, my name is George Goldson, I'm the chairman for the Timbasa Shoshone Tribe, and I just wanted to take the opportunity to use a, a public platform to address a couple of issues that seem to keep reoccurring in the public, and in social media as well, as well as the newspaper, the, the News Review. And one of those issues is that, once the tribe gets that land into trust, they'll be able to do whatever they want. They can just, just run amok, just drill wells, grow marijuana, do whatever we want. That could not be further from the truth. The fact is, there's one entity in this state that can sue the tribe for doing things they shouldn't be doing, and that happens to be the City of Ridgecrest. The City of Ridgecrest is the only entity here that has our waiver of sovereign immunity. So, when I hear this out in the, in the public, that the city can't do anything, that the, the tribe will be able to do whatever they want, I just want to clarify that. That is absolutely not true, that the waiver we gave the city addresses issues that you can, you can take illegal action against the tribe, and even better than that, the tribe has to pay for that action. So, those, those are there for, 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 that's the way the deal was set up, that's the way the deal would be set up if we borrow. So, mainly for the public, for them to understand, because when you read in the News Review about things that, I may not be the legitimate chairman, that really bothers me, because I have put my time in, I have taken my lumps, and believe me, there is a lot of lumps. And I have my tribal council here with me, and I've been duly elected more than once, legally elected more than once, and the News Review comes out with a, a propaganda site that says, I may not be a legitimate chairman, or I may not even be a tribal member. Well, that's funny, because the BIA recognizes me, that, so I have a federal government relationship that I, that I use frequently. I meet with your senators and congressmen, and even state senators, state congresspeople. I've met the president, the prior president several times. And this little book here is twenty-five CFR, Lindsey, you might be aware of it, but some other people may not be, but this is, says Indians on it, twenty-five CFR, says Indians. This covers everything from arts and crafts, to cattle, to land, to everything. This is what regulates us. We just cannot, if I want to cut wood, for example, I want to cut wood on tribal land, I have to go to the BIA to get permission. If I want to burn on tribal land, have to go to the BIA to get permission. So, I just, I just want to make it clear to the public that we're just not, it's not a free-for-all. It's, we are, we, we have regulations that we have to adhere to. So, I just want to make people aware of that. As far as legitimacy of the leadership, I have the final document right here from the United States Court of Appeals Ninth Circuit, San Francisco. This was the final ruling on a lawsuit that was filed by my nemesis against the Bureau of Indian Affairs. of Indian Affairs that I, that we joined, and this is the final ruling of that, if you would care to read the facts rather than the fiction. I did bring this for your reading enjoyment. If you want to sleep, start right here, you'll be asleep before the first page is, I would be, anyway. The other issue that I hear is cannabis. So I want to be perfectly clear, the tribe will never sell, carry, condone, have any type of cannabis activity on any level whatsoever in the city of Ridgecrest, ever. That's never why, we never came here to have any type of endeavor such as that, and we stay true to that. And for the people who don't know me, when I make a commitment, I make a commitment. I made a commitment thirty-five and a half years ago. I kept that. That's the kind of person I am. I want the public to understand that. I bring integrity, I bring honesty, and I even bring the uncomfortable truth. So I just want, I just want to clarify that. I do appreciate the city council, all of you, not just some of you. I do appreciate all of you for standing up for your city, standing up for what you believe in, because that's what I do. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. I'm Suzette Coffield. I'm the CEO of the Ridgecrest Chamber of Commerce, and I'm here for a couple of announcements. Wanted to make sure everybody was aware, they're invited to our 31st Indian Wells Valley Economic Outlook Conference that is scheduled for the morning of Thursday, February 22nd. It's in a couple of weeks. We're excited to be able to bring you a very solid group of speakers. They include our supervisor, Mick Gleason, our mayor, Peggy Breeden, Jim Suver from the hospital, Karina Dreese from the Mojave Air and Spaceport, Scott O'Neill from the IWV EDC. Our keynote speaker will be Robert Klinsheinze, who's an economist, and he will be speaking about his analysis and view of the economy of not only the state, but of our region also. To finalize out, we've got Admiral Corey, Ms. Joan Johnson, and Captain Dale speaking. They will be bringing some views from the base and what's going on there. The event will start at seven o'clock in the morning with a continental breakfast. It'll go till eight. We have a business expo that is open during that time for local businesses to share information about what's going on in their businesses. And at eight o'clock, we start with our presentations and our speakers. We're looking at being done around 12:30, and the business expo will continue on after that until we are done. It will be held at the Kerr McGee Center, and anyone who would be interested in attending, we have tickets on sale through the Chamber website. You can come by the Chamber office or call. We can make arrangements for tickets to be sold. They're forty dollars for Chamber members and forty-four for non-members. We're excited to have a lot of sponsors who are helping us present our speakers, as well as provide seats for students at the height, from our high schools, both private and public and Seracoso. So our educational sponsors are making sure our students get a chance to see this type of conference in action and be a part of it. Our Leadership Ridgecrest students will also have several of them in attendance so that they can get to know another segment of our community and be able to listen to the information. I have information that I'll leave with you concerning sponsorships, tickets, and some information about the speakers, so I'll leave that with you. The other item is that we are glad to say, in working with the RACBB, the Ridgecrest Areas Convention and Visitors Bureau, and the IWV EDC, the Economic Development Corporation, and the Chamber have worked together over the last couple of months to bring together a component that is missing in our community, and that's a community-wide event calendar. We will have it operational before the end of the month. It will be something that any, any community organization, the city, churches, anybody who has a community event will be able to go online, submit the event, it will go into a system, and it will be available on a website that's a standalone website. You can access it by computer or by your phone, and you can see all the things that are going on in this community. There hasn't been one site that can do that, and we're proud to say that we're pulling it together and we'll have it done by the end of the month. A big push for this is for that quality of life. There was a question of, you know, there are a lot more people employed at the base now. There's more people employed at the hospital. Yes, they're employed, but are they going to stay? Are they going to feel a connection to this community and want to stay here? So this community calendar will allow people to be involved in the community and be able to understand it and love it like we do, and be able to stay and enjoy it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Suzette.
Good evening, council. Mike Neal. First, want to start off by saying I fully support Mr. Retor's request and what I believe be the validity of that request. Those of you who have been in infrastructure committee meetings for some time know him to be well-read, well-understanding of the process on all sides, and actually a very large motive force in trying to, trying, and I say emphasize that, to get this facility moving along. I believe over the years, it's been in discussion, that I've been in infrastructure committee meetings, the projected cost had gone from forty-five million to now fifty million. So, you know, delay is costing us, and this issue that the letter is all about has been probably the sole large delay in the process. Keeping your most informed community member out of the loop in this fashion, I think, is inexcusable, and I believe an FOIA request to the Department of Navy would net that letter to Mr. Retor, and he may have to do that, or go to another public advocacy group that deals with freedom of, you know, basically these kind of problems with cities who don't want to be forthcoming. In conjunction with that, I'd just note that I was also myself recently denied information that I asked for, and I requested that this council instruct the city managers to provide me that, and I got no backing in that request, and that is simply something that the information that was paid for with the citizens' taxpayers' money and the survey about the possible tax assessment, that that survey questions and the answers be provided, and the city is keeping that close to their chest for their use, but supposedly that's supposed to be for the good of the city, but the citizens are not being allowed to see that. See, that also is improper and inexcusable, and I'd request once again that that be corrected. As far as comments by Mr. Golson, I'd just like to note, you can make verbal promises all day long, but when you sit in a meeting and refuse to modify your contractual agreements along the lines of, such as, "We won't grow marijuana in Ridgecrest," then I don't see a lot of weight in that, and that's exactly what happened at the one and only tribal committee, city committee meeting that I attended, and I heard lots of excuses as to why, and, you know, a proposal of an inappropriate avenue to make that agreement in at the time. So, we can figure out whether they're really serious or not, if they're going to be pinned to paper on it. Hopefully also, you just got to last night, I believe, my evaluation of the city's list of wants/needs for the parks in town, and also the Kerr McGee Center and the needs there. I went through that, and, you know, you can obviously probably take that as the opposing view side, whatever, you know, the guy who doesn't want the government to spend any more money than they absolutely have to. Basically, my evaluation was, out of the twelve million dollars stated need, ten million dollars are wants, not actual needs. So you got ten million dollars and maybe two or so of possible needs. Now, some of those are need clarification, I will admit, and they weren't explained at all in the presentation. Sadly enough, the city was certainly aware of what was just reported yesterday in the local newspaper, that the penny pool is going to get fixed, it's only going to cost the city, you know, we're going to say probably considerably less than five hundred thousand dollars, yet that list, penny pool for three million dollars, was put on and presented to the council and the public. So, I requested that that discussion occur at every council meeting from here on, while we're in the process of trying to put forth the tax assessment on the populace, so that you get our input as to what we think about that list. It's easy, and my proposal, I think, is entirely doable. So please, give that your consideration.
Thank you, sir.
Hi there, Scott Miller. My address is on file. Mike, you just kind of alluded to what I was going to talk about. We have a committee, the tribe and the city, we have a committee. We've only met once, and the city's canceled the meeting three times. I'm just kind of, not kind of, I'm asking point-blank, can we work together on this? We talk about being good neighbors. I hear Councilman Martin talking about being friendly and good neighbors and things like that, and they hear the tribe, but having the city cancel the meeting three times? It's not a great way to work together and keep open dialogue. Yeah, I can't read my own notes, that's awesome. Anyway, that's more or less what I'm asking is, let's, I know we're all busy with different things happening in our lives and different committees. This, as we all know, is extremely important to the city, both the people that aren't for it and the people that are for it. We need to get together and talk about it, and let's actually have some committee meetings. I don't know the reasons why the meetings were canceled, don't really care. All I know is they were canceled, we've had one, and we need to have some more. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Eddie, I really liked your closing on your prayer. I really liked that. You'll have to remind me what it was, but it was different and I liked it. Anyways, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. The negotiating with the federal government is a long ordeal. We negotiated, I don't know if you call it negotiating-
Would you introduce yourself?
Oh, Peter Brown, Indian Wells Valley Water District, although that's not my title here. Peter Brown, private Peter Brown.
Thank you.
Do you need my address?
We'll have it. We have it on file.
Okay. Anyways, I just want to make it clear that the federal government is a tough egg to crack. We have, we finally have an easement of our own, this is for the water district up on the east side of town. It took us over five years, five years of endless talking and this and that, because it's the way it is. It's a bureaucracy, and it's just the way it is. So, it's going to take a while, and those are the things you don't share, because you're in the middle of a negotiation of, what are you going to do for this, how are you going to do for that, how long can you have the lease for, yada, yada, yada. So, just wanted to make it clear that if you're making progress, great, and it always happens instantaneously. You'll be talking for five years, and all of a sudden you get a letter and saying, "Everything's fine." "Oh, but the attorney has to dot another i someplace," and that'll be another six months, but it still works. So anyways, good job, hope you get it done, and enjoying the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Am I speaking into this right now? Yeah, better. Bard Lauer, I'm the Public Works Director for the city. I wanted to, well, just pay a compliment to our maintenance staff. Couple of weeks ago, they were, showed a problem around the community center. There were some wide cracks. We sat down and had a discussion about different ways that that could possibly be fixed, came up with a solution. Well, they came up with a solution, not, I don't want you to think it was, I was heavily involved, just slightly. And they went about taking the widest cracks and patching them. The middle-sized cracks, they've taken aggregate, poured the cracked seal in on top of that, more aggregate, more cracked seal, till they built up a seal on the cracks that will handle a wider crack. And for the normal ones, they've taken just the regular crack-filling material. Right now, they've taken care of all the close parking for the community center, as well as the front circle, and I think they've done an absolutely excellent job. It was a little congested today when they were, when they were doing the circle, but I think they've done a great job, and I just wanted to tell, tell you guys that I think so. So, thank you.
I appreciate you saying that, because one of the complaints came to me, and I went to our city manager, and within a week and a half, the whole thing was up and started, and I appreciate your help and staff and a good job, because I saw it the other day, that, what you had done. So please extend all of our things to our staff and your staff.
I will, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there any other public comment? Okay. Now it's time for council announcements. Mike, do you have any?
No.
Eddie?
No.
Wallace? Lindsay?
So tomorrow night and Friday night, the chair, they're doing a melodrama dinner theater at 6:00 PM, and you can buy tickets at Red Rock Books or the House, and it's a dinner theater, and it's a play. I lost the thing, oh, there it is. Someone Save My Baby Ruth, and you get to throw popcorn at the villain, and it's just a really fun time. And they also have a dessert theater on Saturday, so just let people know that that's out there and encourage you all to attend, it's fun.
Thank you. I'd like to make one. Those of you who know what trials and tribulations we've gone through with the budget and the money, and the issues that we have faced from the state, including their review of what they deemed as less-than-perfect compliance with all the rules, and we have been reviewed every year I've been on city council, we keep getting this thing saying, "Well, you're trying, but you're not doing enough, and you're not doing it right." I'd like to read a letter to you from the state auditor. Dear Mayor Breeden, Government Code Sections 8546.10 authorizes the California State Auditor, State Auditor, to identify the high-risk local government agencies, included but not limited to county, cities, and selected special districts, that are at high risk for the potential of waste, fraud, abuse, and mismanagement, or that may have major challenges associated with their economy, efficiency, or effectiveness. On August 7th, 2015, the state auditor informed the city of Ridgecrest that it would monitor the city's progress in addressing risk factors we identified in conducting an initial assessment of the city. Among these factors were the conditions of the city's finances, particularly the general fund. We conducted, we conducted an updated audit, determined whether the city had made sufficient progress in addressing these risk factors, and to identify the city's current and planned actions to address them. Although the city has not met all of its funding targets, we determined that the city has taken sufficient action to address the, its finances. Accordingly, our office does not intend, those are my, my emphasis, do not, does not intend to conduct further mentoring and monitoring of the city. However, we may make another assessment of the city based on financial indications of potential risk. We greatly appreciate the cooperation provided by the city's staff and officials during this high-risk local government agency audit program process. You have any questions, please don't hesitate to contact me. I am very thankful that our staff, both, and I see they're not here, and our manager has- has gone above and beyond to take us off that high-risk issue, and I thank them for their hard work. Okay, no other council announcements? We're going to go on to the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the city and will be approved in one motion if no member of the council or the public wishes to comment or ask questions. If comment or discussion is desired by anyone, that item will be removed from the consent calendar and be, and be considered separately. Each public comment before action is taken. Do any members of the council wish to have any item pulled? I'm going to read items three and four. Item three, proposed action to approve the draft minutes of the City of Ridgecrest City Council Successor Redevelopment Agency Financing Authority, Housing Authority, regular meeting dated January 17th, 2018. Number four, proposed action to approve a resolution authoring the city manager to sign the notice of completion on the South China Lake Traffic Synchronization Project, authoring the city clerk to file the notice of completion and authorizing the release of retention in the amount of ten thousand seven hundred and fifty-six dollars and thirteen cents to the contractor, DVX Incorporated, thirty days after the recordation of the notice of completion with the county, with the County of Kern. Any council want any item pulled? Public want any item pulled? Motion to approve?
I approve the motion.
Second.
Please vote. Please vote.
Oh, I was waiting for you to call. Sorry.
It's okay. Five i's, motion carries.
Okay, the next item is discussion, provide direction to the city's representative on the Board of the Indian Wells Valley Groundwater Authority. That is me, and there, we do not have an approved agenda yet, so I promise you that we, I will mind your direction that you've given me in the past and vote if we haven't a voteable item with your concurrence to all the admonitions you've given me and the approvals thereof. I don't have the agenda, so I can't address it right now because our meeting, because of the third, first and third Wednesdays, didn't work with our third meeting, Thursday meeting. So, if you don't have anything to say to me, I appreciate your comments or lack thereof. Okay, we pulled item six. The next item is a city committee report, City Org.
I don't have my notes on that, do you?
No, I didn't bring mine because we, well, we met, oh, that's right.
Well, no, we reported last time, that's right.
Yeah, we did, we reported last time.
We don't have a report.
Thank you, Lindsay. Okay, Finance Committee.
We did meet on, what day did we meet? We met on January 24th, and we went over the CAFRA. It was a whole meeting. That's where we came up with these discrepancies that we brought up.
Thank you. Okay.
Infrastructure.
We did meet, and I didn't bring my notes on that. Lindsay, did you have your notes on that? I know one of the major items we discussed, and Barton just left, but we've been talking about buying a paving machine, and he asked if he could have thirty days to bring back a total report on that, so we offered him that, and do you want to cover the other items?
We just talked about, there was the wastewater that was brought up, but we didn't really get to discuss. There was, I don't have my notes either, but yeah, I remember the slurry seal. It was a pretty light agenda.
It was.
Let's try and think, there was one more thing, though, too.
The Starbucks driveway.
Oh, that's right. Well, that was a comment.
Did we resolve anything on that?
We're still working on that. Lauren has met with both Starbucks and Emmanuel Church, and we're hoping to have a resolution of that here pretty soon.
Here we go. We were going to talk about the parking lot at the Triangle, but we were waiting on... Lawyers?
Always waiting on lawyers.
We needed to access the property.
Yeah, I spoke with Stan at Pizza Factory. We just need to set a meeting with all the stakeholders in that area to come up with an agreement.
Okay. And that, we changed the meeting time to 4:30.
We changed the meeting time from, we changed the meeting time from five to four a while back because Jim's, Jim wanted to, he had another meeting to go to. So he's gone now, so we were going to change it back to 4:30 or 5:00, but Bart is still trans, traveling, so we, we agreed to leave it at 4:30 until he got moved here permanently. Then we're going to change it to five. Right?
Yes.
Okay, Youth Advisory Council?
What about parks?
We've got parks, Madam Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed Parks and Rec and Quality of Life.
Do you want to do that, or you want?
Oh, good.
Okay. All right. So, we actually just met yesterday, and we talked about the pool, penny pool with Mr. Cordell, and what they're working on and how we can help facilitate that. So we're going to be calling over someone from the county to walk through with them on all of the ADA issues to make sure we have everything we possibly need covered so that they're aware of it. And then we also got a copy of the list, the twelve million dollar list that Mr. Neal was talking about, and we're going to start reviewing and going through that and figuring out what, what we think there is a priority, and also a survey is going to be sent out in the very near future to the public to see what the public's priority is.
Okay, thank you. All right, now Youth Advisory.
That is scheduled for, it's coming up Wednesday. That's going to be on Valentine's Day as well, so I'm not sure if we're going to meet. Do you know, Chief, if we're going to meet?
They are still meeting.
They are still going to meet.
They don't need... The last meeting, they planned a scavenger hunt that's going to be coming up here in the near future. Do your stuff.
I understand you're all going to have to find a rock.
They're planning a scavenger hunt, Mr. Matthews, on the, they didn't decide the date yet, but they're planning one, sir. And they're still going to meet on this coming up Wednesday, on the 14th, which is Valentine's Day, which you would probably buy me some flowers.
Okay. Yeah.
Let's go with something.
Okay, the next committee meeting doesn't meet until March or September, and since it's neither one of those, we'll assume you did not meet.
Correct.
The RACBB.
They've moved that, Brother Wallace, if you don't mind if I...
Yeah, no, no, go.
They've moved that meeting also to the 14th of this coming up month, which is Valentine's Day as well. So, Mr. Wallace, you would probably have to buy me something else as well.
Boy, you want to be everybody's Valentine, don't you?
Watch it, watch it.
Okay, EDC.
We meet next week on Valentine's Day.
She whists.
Okay, other boards, commissions, committees, anybody?
League of Cities, I'll be going to next week in Apple Valley.
Madam Mayor, tomorrow, tomorrow, we will have the East Kern Air Pollution Control District meeting.
City Managers Report.
I'll be sending out an email here probably the next few days requesting your input. I do plan on bringing our municipal advisor back to discuss bonding our unfunded actuarial pension costs. It looks like if we can do that, we can save anywhere between five and eight million dollars in general fund money over either a nineteen or thirty-year period of time. So because of the complexity of it and the way that we'd have to do it, I think a workshop might be appropriate beforehand before I bring it back to council, so it gives everybody an opportunity for the consultant to come in and go over, go over everything as detailed as they possibly can, give you guys the opportunity, ask some questions before we take it to council. It looks like it'd be a good way for us to save a significant amount of money. As you're well aware, that, you know, these pension costs have gone up substantially. We do have unfunded actuarial costs of about nineteen million now. If you looked at 2016, it was seventeen million because they changed the discount rate, so it changes the rates of what we owe based upon what they're charging. So if we can lock it in at four and a half or five percent, we could save some significant money over the long term. So, I'll send out an email, see what you guys think, see if we can pick a date. It'll be a workshop, it'll be open to the public. So that should be coming out here in the next couple of days.
Good. Thank you. Okay, Future Agenda Items, anybody?
I, I have one. So, Mr. McLaughlin, or Chief McLaughlin and I have been talking about updating our ban on smoking in the parks because with the increased utilization, there's been an increase in problems with that. So we're going to look at updating our smoking ordinances in parks, so hopefully we can have that on.
Go to City Org, I'm ready.
Oh, okay. He wants us to go to City Org first.
Yeah, that's what I had heard, that it was going to come there, so, okay, good.
And then also, I just wanted to compliment the Parks Maintenance because they have been working hard at Pearson Park and went out and painted and updated, spruced up the tables and benches, and some of the tables have roofs over them, and so they fixed all those up, the ones that weren't replaced with new equipment, so that looks a lot nicer, so.
Okay. Anybody else?
For future or...
Future agenda items?
Oh, I don't have any.
Okay. Now it's Mayor and Council Comments, anyone? I have none.
Well, you know, as most of you know, Eddie and I always make a contest of what time we're going to get out, and he's already lost because he said seven forty-five. I put eight fifteen, so I need to talk for twenty minutes.
I suggest y'all leave, let him talk.
That's okay, the chief lost his bet, too.
That's, well, actually, actually, we're not adjourning right now, we're going to journey to closed session.
We're going back to closed session.
So I'm going to win.
Yeah, I put a condition on our bet that it was open session ended.
No, we didn't say that, we just said council.
Okay.
I have no, I have nothing.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I had one, I just wanted to invite the public to, on the last Sunday of this month, we will be observing Black History Month at a program at 242 West Panamit, here in the lovely city of Ridgecrest. So those that would like to attend at 10:15 will be doing a special service for Black History. So I hope that all we can come on out and enjoy.
Okay, I have one. On the, starting the 22nd of February through the 26th, there's a seminar that's being held by Cerro Coso and San Bernardino Community College to become your own boss. You want to start a business, learn more from a leader in the entrepreneurship education, discover the entrepreneur in you, and increase your employability and promotability, and it is free. And so there's information here, if you want to sign up for it, I think it's a golden opportunity for a lot of people to say, "If I only could do this, I could do that." Well, here's your opportunity. Okay, Wallace, anything? Lindsay?
I already did, please.
Okay, thank you, you did, I'm sorry. All right, then, we will adjourn to closed session. I thank you all for coming, and we'll be out as soon as we can. It won't probably be right this next minute.
It'll be eight fifteen.